And ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, um, no meeting documents today? Oh, Dave has them, so there's a book with meeting documents, it'll be sitting on the corner. It's open for the public to review. Um, if anybody needs a listening device, um, ask one of the county staff. Carol would get that for you. Um, avoid embarrassment, silence your cell phone. Alrighty, moving on to routine business, look for a motion to amend the agenda to remove items number twenty-five and number twenty-six.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve, same sign, motion carries. And now we'll look for a motion to approve our amended agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, we had a commission meeting on May eighteenth. We have the minutes from that are looking for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All of, motion by Hyburger, second by Barth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, uh, motion carries. And do we have? Okay, we don't have a, never mind, I was thinking we had a joint meeting, we had to approve minutes from the joint meetings tonight. Alright, we have bills to be paid in the amount of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Pay the bills.
Second. Comments? Commissioner Barth.
There's a hundred ninety-nine thousand to Metro Communications, uh, and that takes a big chunk out of, uh, that six hundred thousand this week.
Metro Communications appreciates that support, so, yeah. Alright, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. I can multitask. Alright, um, we have reports that are available from the Sioux Empire Fair Association Audit Report for two thousand and nineteen. And we'll move on to personnel actions, look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm here this morning to request your approval on some leave benefit changes effective June first. Of course, you know, throughout the past several months, over a year, we've been changing our policies and procedures, sometimes what felt like on a daily basis to deal with COVID. Um, we've extended our COVID-related leave benefits through the end of May. I am pleased to let you know that, I think throughout the whole entire month of May, we've had maybe four people who even needed to go out for even a small period of time, usually less than a day, so things are much more in hand and we're glad to hear that. So today I'm asking for your update on our leave policies and then, um, I also attached for you some of our COVID procedures that we've been using throughout the past year and updates for that. So as a quick summary, really what we're saying is we're still gonna wanna follow, of course, CDC guidelines, encourage our staff to do that as well, make sure that people are social distancing when they should. As far as when our employees might be impacted by COVID, we're gonna move to following CDC guidelines if they have COVID, of course. But for individuals who may have been exposed, we wanna move to following the guidelines for our critical infrastructure. For our paid time off benefits, what I'm really asking for your approval is to revert to our previous policies with one exception. If we did have employees who were somehow impacted by COVID and needed to be out for a lengthy period of time, what we would like to do through August twentieth only, as sort of a testing phase, is to allow the treatment of COVID-related absences like a serious health condition. In other words, under our policy right now, serious health conditions, people go out for a long period of time, the first twenty-four hours are PTO, and then after that, um, they take extended sick leave. So even though COVID isn't always a serious health condition, we'd like to treat those absences, including like a daycare closure along the same timeframe, and that's the main crux to what I'm asking for your approval for today.
Questions? Basically, we're giving them access to ESL, otherwise they wouldn't have the ability to access that for COVID-related issues.
Correct, and we'd be ending, of course, the COVID leave balances that we had given staff access to during the past year. So everybody was given a couple of weeks of COVID-related time off. And what we'd like to do in that case is we intend to freeze any existing balances just in case something happens this fall. But we'd be removing access to those leave balances and reverting to PTO and ESL, with the exception that we would treat COVID-related absences as a serious health condition.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve these leave benefit changes for COVID-nineteen-related absence through August twentieth, the twenty-twenty-one. Commissioner Bender.
I'll make that motion, then I'll have a comment after a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, Commissioner Bender.
Yeah, I just really wanna thank Carrie and her department, 'cause she wasn't joking when she said that we, these policies have changed and there were flow charts and it was complicated and, um, you know, I, I feel good, I think we extended leave benefits. We're very generous to extend them through this period of time and, and I think employees have been generally pretty responsible about using them when needed. I mean, the goal has always been take care of people when they're sick, encourage people not to come to work if they're sick, and, I mean, that doesn't change. But thankfully, we are all in a period where we're all can celebrate a little bit, go out to dinner and go to a movie maybe and do things responsibly. So I, I'm very supportive of this and I just really wanna thank, um, you and your team for everything you've done to get us to this point.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's been a challenging year and I too wanna thank everybody who's been involved in that committee on COVID with us. We were meeting quite frequently there for a period of time. And then also to all of our staff, 'cause I agree, um, by and large, everyone has been very responsible in their use and very careful. And I appreciate everyone's patience over the last year as we sent out one set of regulations after another, so my thanks to everyone.
Alright, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
The last, oh, go ahead.
You're on.
Alright, the last item I have is a request for your approval to, um, on a reclassification for the office manager in the state's attorney's office. It's currently graded at a pay grade fourteen, and the reason for that is when we went through our study, it was a lead worker over about six staff members. And over the last several years, it's now become the formal supervisor in all ways, including evaluations, hiring, disciplinary decisions, and recommendations for ten legal office assistants. Given that level of responsibility, it's more appropriately classified as a pay grade sixteen. Daniel's here, if you have any questions on the job itself or the duties or responsibilities.
Questions?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Comments? Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Alrighty. Thank you, Carrie. Um, abatements recommended for approval, we have none. Notices and requests, there aren't any. And planning and zoning notices, again, there are none. We'll move on to a petition for compromise of lien. Melinda, come on in, we have DPNO three, four, five, six, six, in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-three cents.
Good morning, Commissioners, Melinda Storely, Commission Office. The petitioner is requesting to have the lien compromised with payment of five hundred dollars. The lien fees were recorded from nineteen ninety-three through two thousand and nine for both poor relief and legal representation. Poor relief total is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Payments on the lien total nine hundred dollars. The petitioner was selected as an homeowner-partner in January of two thousand and twenty-one for the Habitat for Humanity, uh, ownership, homeownership program. She's been pre-approved for a home loan, but Habitat will not sign a purchase agreement until the construction of her home is closer to completion and she, with the help of family and friends, has completed at least two hundred hours of the three hundred minimum hours of sweat equity. One of the conditions for this program is for her to resolve any delinquent debt and to improve her financial situation at at least thirty days prior to closing on her home. She has eliminated a previous lien back in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, she was just removed from the lien and the balance was left on her ex-spouse. She's now attempting to have this lien compromised and released. Uh, she's currently employed and earns one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seventy, eighty-seven cents by weekly. Her two thousand and nineteen income tax shows wages of thirty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-five, with a refund of seven thousand nine hundred and one dollars. In her application, she claims an annual income of thirty-eight thousand with a total of two hundred and forty-seven dollars in assets and a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred in liabilities. That seems like much, let me, if you don't mind.
That's correct.
That, that was in, okay.
I did the math.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, um.
Petitioner is here.
The petitioner is here. Um, do we usually go to the petitioner or do we ask questions first?
Questions first. Questions first?
Questions first, okay. Uh, many questions, Melinda? Okay, so the petitioner that, um, is here can address the commission. You don't have to come up to the stand or anything, you can stay where you are and you don't have to give us your name. But if you, anything you'd like to add to the narrative that, um, Melinda read, um, to support your case for us to, um, compromise this lien? I guess the only question I would have that comes to my mind is, when is the closing on this loan scheduled to occur? Do we know? Is there a closing date? You had mentioned it has to, this has to happen at least thirty days prior to the loan closing. Do we know when the loan closing is? November, okay, so six months out, five months out, okay. Okay, did you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, I, I wrote, you guys could see that what I wrote.
Yep.
That's, that's really all I have. I know that I made a lot of bad choices, um, I'm in active recovery, I've been sober for about fifteen years. So most of that stuff is when I was in my active recovery. Uh, I'm going to school right now, I, I gave my master's degree next year for addiction counseling and to help other people that, through the things that I've gone through financially, I was making payments every month and I've been about this debt that I had, but, um, got COVID twice last year and am still trying to catch up to that, so I haven't moved in over seven months.
Commissioner Barth.
Thanks for being here. I, I have a question as far as, uh, the hours in the Habitat program. How close are you to getting in the number of hours that you need to put in?
I think I have a twenty-nine, but right now there's not many opportunities for me to do this, but I, I would, in July, I'll be able to start doing several hours.
Other comments, questions? Commissioner Benega.
I would just make a comment, uh, reading through your application, I, uh, was amazed that you were able to do what you were able to do after fifteen years of being sober and then giving back to the community by being a counselor. Uh, I appreciate that and certainly will support the settlement of this, 'cause this doesn't happen very often.
I would second that, I just, I mean, I wish the public could read the statements that we got to read, it's very inspiring to me and I hope you share your story often with folks, 'cause I think it'd be very, very inspiring and give people hope that it can be done, so.
Is the same, I, you've, you've done a lot in, you know, the years that you've been there and she's raising children and she's, I've hopefully done a really good job. I think somebody's in college or, um, so she has done this all on her own and overcome a lot of hurdles. So I appreciate what you've done and I appreciate the fact that you would show up, because not everybody does, so.
I would make a motion to compromise the lien to, or three, four, five, six, six for five hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, other comments? Mr. Chair.
You know, I, I'm in sympathy with, uh, Commissioner Benega's, uh, motion. At the same time, I'd like to see more, uh, work completed on the, uh, the, the, uh, operation before we do that. There's also, I note, uh, no twenty-twenty income tax return shown, and, uh, I'm guessing that you must have gotten a good refund on that.
I haven't gotten a return, I did file, but I haven't gotten it yet, because I didn't add my healthcare, I think we needed to, because there's no more Obamacare, but I currently, I do, so I did an amendment, so it's, it could, there's probably six months.
Thank you for that.
I'm kind of torn on this one a little bit myself, in that I agree completely with Commissioner Benega and the sentiments of, wow, you've done a great job and things have really, um, you're a great productive member of society and gonna become a homeowner and, um, put, you know, get this house, place for your family to live. The, the reason I'm a little mixed is, um, we're still six months out and you have a lot to go through and I'm thinking, well, maybe do we make you come back and do it all over again? But the more I think about it, the less I don't see where that makes any sense, so I will support compromising this lien also. And with that, we will do a roll call vote.
Barth.
No.
Bender. Yes. Benega.
Yes.
Hyburger.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you can work with Melinda. Alrighty, we have now moved into our opportunity for public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Anybody coming down the hall? No, okay. Alrighty, move on to regular business, unless I missed something? Nope, regular business, uh, pub. There's a person in the hall, is he here for, are you here for public comment? You here for public comment?
Yo.
Okay, um, public hearing to consider fifteen special event on sale liquor license applications for the Barrel House at Houston Speedway race events between June two thousand and twenty-one and September two thousand and twenty-one. Morning, Ben.
Good morning, um, Ben Kite Auditor's Office, yes, so I'm here to present a series of liquor licenses. This is the first one for consideration is, as you read, um, for the Barrel House for various events at Houston Speedway between June twenty-first and September twenty-first. And I'm sure if you're, anybody's here to speak on that? You are?
Morning.
Morning. Mark Fonder, I'm doing the concessions and, uh, audit the racetrack, so they applied for liquor license, the new owners with the city of Brandon and that, and it's not approved yet till the end of the race season, so, um, basically what we're trying to do upstairs, we got the suites and that and we're just trying to take care of them, so.
Does the city of Brandon have a liquor license available or not?
They're waiting on the census, so they said, I think, at whenever their, end of the summer, they're gonna apply, so.
Did this facility have its own liquor license at one time?
They did, when Chuck Brandon owned it and then when they.
And he never renewed it, so it's gone, so now we have to make special, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions? Motion.
Got to have a public comment, so if there's anybody, I mean, not public comment.
I thought that, okay, so you're speaking obviously for, a proponent, any opponents to, um, granting this liquor license? Special event, fifteen events, if you wanna know when Houston's has their events, there they are. Yes.
I'd like to ask, uh, the auditor a question. Ben, uh, how many days can you get a special event liquor license? I mean, can I get three sixty-six and a leap year or just, just twenty or?
I'll be honest, I don't know the, the, the laws on that. I know that we have, um, other events that people ask for more than one day, one, two, or three days. If it's like a weekend, so I'm not sure if there is a limit on the number of days. Obviously, this person is looking for a series of one-day, um, event licenses.
And the cost per day is fifty dollars, I believe?
Yeah, fifty dollars a day.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly in support of this. At the same time, if there is a limit, we should find out what it is and, uh, try to urge Brandon to act in, uh.
Soon as the census is in. May have some comments from legal.
Actually, more of a question, Mr. Chairman. I'm doing a quick checking, because if the city of Brandon issued a license to this location in the past, I'm not sure the county can issue a special event license to this location now, the city of Brandon would have to do that.
It's not in the city limits of Brandon, though.
Well, then how did they issue a license to the location in the past?
I think the comment was yesterday, by, by how many, um, miles the radius is from Brandon? So I think, I, I mean, I don't know what your part of the law is it, but, um, that's how they got it from Brandon, it's 'cause they're in that zone of Brandon issuing liquor licenses.
Which brings me back to the first question, is whether or not that same geographic location. So I'm just checking if, if maybe you could defer this down the calendar or your agenda just a little bit, we could double check without.
To the end of our agenda.
We do have, um, the first event is June thirteenth, so there.
But if we deferred it to the end of today, you're talking just to the end of today's agenda.
So we'll move this item to, um, after item twenty-seven, give you a chance to look into it.
We don't wanna waste your time.
Okay, so we're gonna move this just to the ba, back of our agenda, which will, we will get to in a little bit while we have time to make sure that we have the authority to, to grant this, so I'll suspend action on that for now and, um, we move on to another liquor license.
Yes, so we have a, uh, here to consider the liquor license renewal application for Pump and Pack due to a liquor license compliance check violation.
I think you missed the one for the fairgrounds.
You missed one, sorry. Ah, sorry.
Renaissance.
So this is the, uh, special event on sale wine liquor license application for Sulan Renaissance Association for June fifth and sixth festival at the W H Lyon Fairgrounds. If there's any, anybody here for comment on that?
Would you like to speak in, I imagine you're here with the Renaissance.
My imagination is most welcome.
You don't mind introducing yourself?
In your time, I am Anavor, he's, when I am dressed like this, I play Lady Anne Cook Bacon, mother of Francis Bacon. We would like to continue our festivities, this is our twentieth year of having a Renaissance festival, though last year we did hide from the plague. We have thought long and hard about whether it would be safe to have this event, as we are outdoors and the numbers are most encouraging. We plan to have the event, the liquor will be sold in a tent with open sides, so that people will not be close together and we believe that it will much increase our festivity to be able to share mead from Panacea Me, Panacea Meadery and beer from Beal.
So mead will be available.
Mead will be available.
Anybody here in opposition to this? Alrighty.
Motion to approve.
A second, I, with just a comment.
Second by Barth, okay.
That the, the need for mead makes me feel more festive.
Agree.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Grand mercy.
Alright, we are now on to the liquor license renewal for Pump and Pack and we're doing this because of a liquor license compliance check violation, um, in the current licensing year.
Have nothing to add.
Okay, so that license check looks like it was done back in February and, and do we have anybody here from Pump and Pack? Good morning, sir.
Hi.
Can you have your name?
Kurt Mattson, I, uh, built it twenty years ago, this is my twentieth year and I'm the owner and manager.
Okay, um, February twenty-fifth wasn't a great day, anything you wanna add to what happened or what, how you prevent it from going forward?
Yeah, we, we do TAM training, uh, it's an online class now, so all our employees have to take that. The gal that, that had the, the mistake, she's a ten-year employee, she's a single mom with grandma and she just messed up. You know, she called me right away, she was sorry that it happened and so are we, and, uh, I think she just made a mistake. But we also offer each employee five hundred dollars if they have a compliance check and, and pass it. So it gives them a little extra incentive to check everybody and think about it at least, 'cause it can be a busy.
Sounds like a good program and mistakes can happen, so.
Make a motion to approve, uh, and I must say, five hundred dollars is my motivation to sometimes.
Point of order, we have to have opponents.
I'm sorry?
We have to have opponent opportunity.
Okay, anybody here in opposition to renewing this license? We have a motion still from Commissioner Barth.
Second is motion.
Second by Hyburger, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you for your time, sir, appreciate you coming in. Um, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two malt beverage and South Dakota Farm License Renewal Applications, I mean, all of them in front of us, anything to add, Ben?
Nothing to add.
Any here for proponents, opponents? Alrighty, um, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, okay. We have a few weddings coming up, people want consume and blend alcohol beverage license applications, um, beginning with the Joshua Nelson for an event on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. And these are all, I believe, at the Isaac Walton League, or mostly out at the Isaac Walton League. From when I read it, I, that's what I recall, so basically they're gonna provide their own alcohol and not charge for it and they, but they need our approval to do that, so that's what we have in front of us. I don't think we need to take public testimony on these, do we? Okay, so, look for motion.
A motion to approve the consume and blend alcohol beverage license application for Joshua Nelson on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. We have the same consume and blend alcohol beverage license application from Todd Spomer for an event on July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
And to approve.
Ben.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. A lot of weddings coming up. Again, motion to approve a consi, approve a consume and blend alcoholic beverage license application from Andrea Carson for an event on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Alrighty, moving on to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund agreement. Go ahead and brief us.
So, uh, back at end of April, I provided a briefing on the, um, the American Recovery Plan Act, uh, which, uh, allows Minnehaw County to receive about thirty-eight million dollars in grant funds to be applied towards coronavirus relief. Um, my, uh, request today is for a motion for you to authorize, uh, the commission chair to sign the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund agreement, uh, that basically just acknowledges that we are, uh, would comply with whatever rules that are on the, um, the grant funding and that, uh, once we, uh, provide them with our signed, uh, form, they would start to send those funds to us. So we, uh, I do know that other counties within the state have started to receive their funds, so, uh, if we, uh, sign this, we'd probably get half of that within a few weeks and then we could start to understand the best ways to allocate those resources.
Alright, questions for Ben?
I guess my first question is, is when will we get all the details on the regulations, on what can and can't be spent?
Well, I think if you ask the US Treasury, they probably have provided those, it's just how do you, how do you interpret those, right? So I think we've started to have some conversations with our peers, uh, around the city and how they're thinking about it. I think we'll continue to have those type of conversations to, uh, understand, you know, how we can spend those monies. We're getting a better handle on the, that, you know, I think as, um, Karen Miller had indicated, you know, as we think about, you know, whether it's, um, replacing furniture or other things around the, uh, site, we, we might be able to use those. But, uh, I, I think, again, we're just continuing to learn as we talk to others about what, how we can use these funds.
Is there a timeframe that the Treasury, Treasury Office has indicated to us that they'll have this completed, so to speak? And how much time we'll have to have it audited, if you will?
So I know that we have up until, uh, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four to, um, allocate those funds and I think you, you have, uh, till twenty twelve, twenty, twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six to actually spend them. So you can, you know, identify your uses and then through two thousand and twenty-six and we're, be responsible for, um, reporting on the use of those funds throughout that time period. Um, there's no requirement that we actually spend the money, right? So we can get the money, hold it in our banking account and not spend it if we don't think we've, uh, we've got an appropriate use for that and then, then just return it to the US Treasury at the end of two thousand and twenty-four.
One more quick question, I'm sorry. Is it reasonable to put this in some sort of a restricted account since it's so far down in the future before we maybe have it spent or whatever to maintain it as a separate item?
Well, we will put this in a special fund, right, so that it will be accounted for separately and that, uh, we've been in consultation with. So it will be accounted for separately and that we've been in consultation with the Department Legislative Audit. They've kind of given that guidance to all the county auditors that it should go in a specific fund.
Thank you. No, I don't have any more questions.
I guess the only question that comes to my mind, Ben, is we report how we're going to spend the money, but that's not necessarily looking for approval because they could come back anytime. And, you know, we're not, when we say this is how we're gonna do it, that's not asking for permission. That's just reporting. Eventually, they could come back and audit and say, well, no, no, or yeah, okay. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think it's just like the CRP funds that we, yeah, coronavirus relief funds that we received. It'd be the same thing. We could still get audited in those, but yeah, so we're gonna have to make sure that we have good documentation and justification in all of our spending that we make sure it relates back to the purposes of the grant funds.
Okay, so Commissioner Bender.
So do you know if they're gonna, anticipating a process similar to the process we went through with the last set of funding where there'll be local trained advisors that will help vet out are the things that we're considering spending the money on?
So we are starting to reach out to people. I mean, we've considered that places like Seacog might be a good place for us to get some consultant work, you know, looking to reach out to the state. Although we're kind of hesitant or don't think the state will be willing to provide that much guidance because it's not their money and they don't have anything to do with it. But yeah, we're starting to look for some sort of consultants that we can leverage to make sure that we're spending the money correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, thank you, Ben. Moving on to Lutheran Social Services Family Violence Project Presentation. Jay.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. My name is Jay Marchand. I'm the Director of Reentry Services for Lutheran Social Services. And I'll maybe give a little bit more info than we normally would at these since we weren't here last year due to COVID and since the transition from the Compass Center and us taking over that program. So as you're aware, the Family Violence Project is programming for men and women that are involved in domestic violence offenses. We're working with the offender through group work and assessment work. Back in November of twenty nineteen, we took over this project from the Compass Center, made a transition as it just seemed to fit better, if you recall. Also at that same time, we partnered with the Network Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault and the Second Circuit Courts here to enhance the assessment piece of our programming. So what we now have set up is that if an individual has pled guilty or has found guilty of a misdemeanor domestic violence offense, they're ordered by the judge to come see us for an assessment. They are given forty-eight hours to get that scheduled. We have a little grace with that, too. We'll work with you to try to get you in. And the purpose of that assessment is to give an individualized recommendation back to the courts as to what we feel is the most appropriate intervention for them and the issues that they face. So these assessments are looking at factors like substance abuse, mental health, past trauma, prior domestic violence related issues. And we also utilize a specific risk tool, which will tell us the potential for a further domestic violence offense in the future. So trying to be a little bit proactive as well as what our intervention would be. So after a client is ordered to the court, like I said, they're given forty-eight hours to call us and get on the schedule. In fiscal year twenty twenty, we only had twelve percent of the clients that were referred that actually called us within that window. And fifty-four percent called at some point to schedule their assessment. So it was clear we were missing a lot of individuals for these. Through continued work with the courts, attorneys, defense attorneys, we've seen a large jump in compliance with this initial order. In this fiscal year to date, we've had thirty-nine percent that have called within that forty-eight hour window and eighty-three percent have called at some point in time. So we're confident that we're moving in the right direction of accountability for these individuals that are being sent to us. From November twenty nineteen to the end of fiscal year twenty twenty, we assessed one hundred and nine individuals. This fiscal year to date, we've assessed one hundred and sixty individuals and counting. They're coming through quite a bit. Sixty-six percent were recommended to domestic violence services, twenty-five percent to mental health services and nine percent to other services. So this enhanced assessment piece has really increased accountability for a lot of these individuals. The majority of them are not on any sort of community supervision, so we're able to have some more eyes on them. As I'm sure you're familiar, a lot of our domestic violence offenses happen behind closed doors. And so this just helps to make sure we have more eyes to try to break this cycle for the families involved. In regards to our group work, we have group that is held one time a week. We offer, I think we're up to five or six different time slots throughout the week for our participants to attend. We have some that are held exclusively via Zoom to allow if you're on your work break out in your parking lot, you can join us. We have them in the evenings, afternoons as well. As of today, we have fifty-five participants in our groups. Ninety-one percent of those participants are male offenders that come through. We also, when we took this over, included a intensive group that is held two times a week. And this is gonna be for individuals that have repeat offenses, prior enrollment in domestic violence offender groups, that have a very serious charge that they came to us with or their score that we talked about indicates an extremely high risk of future offense. And so we're gonna put them in a more intensive track to try to address some of those needs. So with the support of the county, we're able to offer our group classes on a sliding fee scale. Because that is, one issue that can get in the way is being able to provide for group and we want to address that if we can. So clients with income under fifty thousand dollars pay a reduced session fee. And in the last year, we had ninety-three percent of our participants that qualified for that sliding fee scale. We also offer a hardship waiver for those that are lower income still than that, with some of them paying as little as five to ten dollars per session for group. So we're really trying to address as many barriers as we can. The assessment, if you're on a misdemeanor domestic violence charge, is free through our partnership with the network, so we've eliminated that barrier as well. Since taking over this program in November twenty nineteen, fifty-nine percent of our clients have successfully completed the program. Eighty-five percent have not re-entered the criminal justice system for any domestic violence related offense. So seeing positive numbers. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of individuals referred, a lot of individuals coming to group. But once they do come to us, I'm hopeful we can do some positive work for them and the families. So again, without your support, it'd be very difficult for us to provide this and any sort of reasonable scale for the clients. Any questions?
I guess I have a question and a comment. So forty-six percent aren't contacting you. What's the repercussion? I mean, if they're ordered to, but they don't do it, what?
So we have a whole system in place and so how it works is if you're forty-eight hours, right after court, we're sent this notice saying they've been referred and we sit and wait. And if we don't hear from you, we send a letter to the client, defense attorney, the state's attorney, everyone involved saying this individual didn't show up. At that point in time, there can be motions to bring them back in. If they're going through, if they've been sentenced to group and they're not finishing group, we'll send a notification to everyone involved again, saying, hey, they're not coming to group. At that point, they can do a motion to revoke. So what we're seeing is without them being on probation and parole all the time, there wasn't a whole lot of notice to the court that they're not showing up. And so with this increased accountability, we're seeing that more.
What does the county give you to fund your operation? I don't remember.
I, and I should have had that. I was thinking about that when I was back there. I think it's about thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six, okay.
That we get for support, yeah.
I guess my comment is, you know, when I look at what you, the people you're working with and what you're trying to prevent, obviously, domestic violence in itself is a terrible thing. But, you know, when I think about my time and my experience with law enforcement officers, that's the worst call they can go on is one that involves domestic violence. And if we, you know, think about, you know, the shooting incidents that we have, so many of them involve domestic violence.
Absolutely.
And when I see that eighty-five percent of your clients have not re-entered the system for domestic violence, that's pretty impressive.
Right, it's moving in the right direction. And one thing that worries me as a director of this is are we ever going to say that a client has successfully completed but stuff is still happening at home that we don't know about? And so our latest push is working with advocacy groups like Compass Center, Children's End, detectives and the law enforcement to create a task force where we can further enhance this, where we can start to hear the victims' voices more and make sure that we're not giving a quote-unquote stamp of approval, but stuff is still happening. So that's our next push.
Alrighty.
Wonderful.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, and is Michelle, oh, Michelle right there, Michelle Trent from the Compass Center, hand in hand, hand in glove here, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Trent from the Compass Center. I'm the Executive Director. I took over in October of this past year. So I'm here to just update you on the Compass Center. I know that we have valued your involvement with our organization for several years and I know that many of you know us and know what we do. So just want to provide some updates and some new things that have happened for us. Certainly, the past year has been challenging for everyone. I think for domestic violence and sexual assault, there have been some unique challenges that have occurred and that we're working through. So you'll see on the numbers that I provided to you, our total numbers for the year are down and people will say, well, how come that is? And we've heard in the news that domestic violence has gone up. And what we have found and what we've heard from victims is that violence is occurring, but they're not able to as easily come in to see us. And so we've got folks that, you know, with, we were doing telehealth for a while or their partner was laid off of work or something like that. And so that restricts their ability to move, to come in for sessions. And then we also know that people are just stressed and so mental health and services are hard when you are really stressed. So we have parents who are homeschooling multiple children. They're working from home. They're trying to navigate all of those things. And so it's been a very stressful year for the victims that we serve. We have noticed a trend for our particular victims that the violence that they're reporting has increased in intensity and in danger to them. So we have folks that have reported multiple instances of violence in the past, but are now talking about violence that they needed medical attention for or that was significantly worse. So that's something that internally we're monitoring. You'll see our age breakdown. Our greatest population always is twenty-five to twenty-nine-year-old victims, but we are seeing a large number of victims from age zero to twelve. And so the Little Navigators Program that I included information about for you in there is aimed to address that. So across the state, across the county, across the city, there is a shortage of registered play therapists and therapists that work specifically with children. There is, in every play therapist, there is a waiting list for children to be seen, including at the Compass Center because there's just not enough. And so we identified that as being an issue and said, how do we, you know, I can hire more play therapists, but the need will always be higher than what I have. And so really looking at what can we do to partner with the community to tackle this problem. So we've partnered with MB and South Dakota Parent Connection to aim to address this issue. And so what we've done is started a therapy treatment program in a preschool. So we have a classroom at MB South in which we provide group therapy to, right now, there are seven children enrolled in our pilot program. These are children that have experienced violence or whose parents have experienced violence or at high risk of experiencing child abuse. So children who have problematic behaviors are often high risk for child abuse because people get frustrated with them. And so we have kids in there that are at risk for child abuse. And so that program is aimed to provide, we provide twelve hours of intensive group therapy to those kiddos. And we also have a parent program. So we work with the parents through South Dakota Parent Connection to provide them education, to provide them support. So parenting a child who has special needs or who has problem behaviors is very frustrating and stressful and it can make people feel like they're alone. And so that parent group has become just as much support group as it has education. So we do parent education in there as well. Our goal here is to get into families, so similar to what Jay was talking about, right? We know that domestic violence is occurring behind closed doors. We know that it's occurring and not being reported. So statistically, for every incident of violence that's reported, another seven are happening and not being reported. So we know that violence is occurring in those families and so we want to get into those families and provide services to that family unit as a whole and refer them to other services that they are needing. So we're just ending our pilot program. The last week is this week. And so we'll have more data on the success of that program and hope to continue that program going forward. So your support helps us to do those kinds of things, helps us to do those new things to really meet a need that is happening in our communities and across our state. And so we're very excited about it and very excited about how this will impact the kids and the families that we're working with. Other than that, the Compass Center continues to provide services in partnership with lots of folks in the community. We continue to provide support to victims of sexual violence, of domestic violence. All of our services continue to be at no charge to those victims and those things are continuing, unfortunately, in a pandemic. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you all have about the program I talked about or about anything related to the Compass Center, but certainly appreciate your support and the support that you've given us over the past years.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
A couple of quick questions. I know I actually was on the board many years ago. Do we have any representatives of the sheriff or the state's attorney that are on your board these days?
We do not. We previously had a Sioux Falls police detective that was on our board, but because we received funding from the city, there was some conflict of interest pieces. And so we're working on navigating some of those things because we want to have those voices on our board. But there are some conflicts because we do receive funding from various places. So we have had advisory members in the past and are considering that again.
Michelle, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Briefing us this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on. Authorized Chair to sign a professional service agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. to complete, what are we completing? The twenty twenty-one Raze Grant Application. Morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners. Yeah, so this is an agreement with HDR to put together a submittal for the Raze Grant, which last year would have been called, excuse me, the Build Grant, which we applied for funding to do design of Maple Park Street with the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Brandon from Veterans Parkway to South Dakota Highway eleven. We were unsuccessful last year and decided since it's probably gonna take a few years to do this, we're just going to apply for all of it. Instead of just design, apply for construction and design at the same time. So with the updated requirements of the Raze Grant, to best compete and the fact that we want to apply for construction as well, that's the reason for this agreement. It is under fifty thousand dollars, which typically with approval of the liaison, it could be signed by the commission. But since it's not technically in our budget for this year, it has to come in front of the commission. So that's why I'm here today.
Questions for Jacob. Commissioner Bender.
It's less a question than just a statement. I mean, I think that all the stakeholders here recognize that this is a really important project and one that we have to figure out a way to move forward and it's just very expensive. And so I think, you know, even if we don't get it this year, this money will put us, help us to learn more and be better positioned to apply for funding in the future. But we're hopeful that we'll get it this year. So I'm very supportive of it.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, one aspect of this project is it impacts the whole area. It's not like it's a pothole on my street. This affects the city of Brandon, Split Rock Township, Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. This is a big project and we really could use help on it.
This is more money than we have to spend. I believe, what's the dollar amount for this total project? Sixteen, seventeen million estimated?
Yeah, yep, in that ballpark, for sure. Yep, and that is shared between the city of Brandon and the city of Sioux Falls, but that's a very large chunk of money, well over what we can budget in a year, for sure. Along with this, next week, there will be a joint funding agreement for this. It is with the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Brandon. Sioux Falls ends up owning about twenty-four point five percent of the total length of this project. We own sixty-four point four and Brandon owns eleven percent. So that agreement will come through next week and just took some extra time due to legal review. But we would like to move forward with the consultant agreement since we have a deadline of July twelfth to have everything submitted by.
Are those the numbers that we use to split the fees? Is it?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Bender.
Just as a point of clarification, I mean, this is still a township road, right?
It is currently, yes.
Yeah, so we don't really own it, but we recognize that the township also is not in a position to do this kind of construction.
Correct.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second by Barth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jacob. All right. Chris Swanson, Presentation in the Treasurer's Office.
Good morning. Commissioner Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. Basically, what I would like to talk about today is we're growing. Minnehaha County is growing. And I, since I've been in here, what now, five months, it's been kind of interesting, the numbers I've seen and what I've seen at the windows. It's, in fact, just the other day, or last week, I'm following the tax and license technicians just to see what kind of business is coming into our office. Is it more registrations, property taxes? What are we doing here? And the amount of titles that have come in from out-of-staters, just from new people coming in, it's astounding. I mean, we're growing, and it's exciting, but it's kind of scary. So I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint that is more for you to view, but I can give you a few numbers on, just for instance, our property taxes this year. We brought in parcels with the first half paid was 93.7%. Parcels with the second half paid were 14.3%. From 2020, our parcel count was 73,557. In '21, it was 74,504, so that's gone up 1,000. So, I mean, just that. Some of our titles that we have, in fact, I had a gal put that together for me. From January, we had 5,805 titles come through, and April was 7,497. So we keep increasing, you know, our numbers just keep going up. And what I'm hoping, and I was, we had a Dr. Tracy from USD Beacon Program. I have been in contact with him. He was actually supposed to give me a number, an appraisal on what it would cost for him to come in. He's with a leading program to revamp our office, make it more effective and efficient. Sadly, he hasn't gotten back to me yet because I really wanted to have some numbers and some ideas for you today, but I don't have those sadly. But I'm excited to have him come in and just review some of the issues that we have within the office because we are going to be needing eventually more people. With Amazon coming in and Schwan's coming in, we're just getting more and more volume coming in all the time. And so that is kind of where we're headed in that department. Let's see. What questions would you have for me, I guess? I'm just kind of letting you know that we are growing exponentially. And I want to be ahead of that game before we get there. I did have a Department of Revenue man, a gentleman, sit down with me and tell me, you know, Chris, when you get to 250,000, which our city is getting close to that, he goes, all of a sudden, it's just massive explosion. And I want to be ahead of that explosion rather than behind it and trying to catch up. So what I'm proposing right now, and in the small talkings that I did have with Dr. Tracy, we are looking like at least three more window techs. We'd have to obviously put three more windows in and try to crowd that in somehow. And eventually, we're going to have to have some people, maybe possibly another accountant or a senior tech, just for the fact that right now, and I was speaking with Cindy a little bit the other day, you know, right now, people want their, staff wants vacation time, which I want to honor. I want to honor that. But when I have two people gone at the window, I'm pulling people from the back to try to cover the front. Their job isn't getting done in the back. Phones aren't getting answered. That gets my blood pressure going. And it's like, I can't, we've got to figure something out here. And so again, I just want to be on top of this before it gets to the point where, ugh, we are struggling. So.
Commissioner Ritter.
Chris and I visited yesterday for quite a while and talked about, she talked about the increased number of titles that are coming through. And so just looking at the amount of time it takes to do one title, and so how much time, you know, how much staff time does that take up if that person strictly just does titles? And so how does that work down in the numbers? And again, we talked about, you have two people gone on vacation, and then you have somebody calling sick.
Inevitably.
Yeah, you're short, short three people. And just covering all of her bases has just gotten to be a struggle. I think we heard those things from Pam. She definitely had a difficult time trying to explain to us what was going on. I think Chris is doing a better job of trying to figure out where those numbers are at and to cover things. She's also increased the efficiencies in the office and continues to work on that, like the scanning of the, of checks and some of the other things she has done in her office and trying to cross-train some of the efficiencies she's tried to do to see, you know, how can we tighten things up and do we still need staff? So I think she's on the right track.
And that's where I think Dr. Tracy would be really good about coming in because he even said, no, he could help. We're going to go through each person's, you know, job. What, you know, what is your appointed job to do? And see if that is something that can be, can we streamline that better? Do we need more people in that area? And so that's why I'm anxiously waiting for him to get back to me. But what I can see right now is, yes, we are going to need some sort of growth. I mean, if we continue to grow, we can't, our county continues to grow. I'm afraid we can't stay at the same numbers that we're at and try to meet the needs of everybody in the taxpayer in Minnehaha County. But I can tell you one thing that was exciting too, you know, we started collecting the $20 fee. And so in May, or in April, I'm sorry, we only had, no, let me go back. We started April 1st. So we basically started middle of April, maybe counting what we were making. And back in April, just for that half of that month, it was $3,273. Now, as of May 18th, just in May, we brought in $4,200 in those $20 fees. So that kind of gives you a clue, you know, we're getting a few more of those coming in, which is exciting, you know, but yeah.
Commissioner.
I don't think that there was a request for staff in 2022 as most of those were long-range until at least after you talked to Dr. Tracy.
Correct. That is correct. So, yep.
Long range.
Tracking out.
Commissioner Barth.
I think Gerald was waving before me.
Then again.
Chris, do you keep track of electronic transactions versus the in-house transactions with the lineup, so to speak? I think a comparison would be helpful, where that can be tracked, to see if, in fact, we can encourage and do some public service announcements, so to speak, to keep people aware of the fact that they have that option?
I will look into that.
Thank you.
I must say that this is kind of a familiar problem down there. And this building here is not forever. And when we replace it, or when they replace it, because I'll be gone, you know, we could have drive-up windows or something like this too. And I wonder about extended hours, you know, if you started at 7:30 and went till 5:30.
And we had talked about that, especially since we want to work on scanning checks yet because we have to have that deposit in by 5:30, you know, the working day. And by the time our tellers get done at their windows, it's usually 10 to 15 after. So we've got to come up with another way to make this, if, you know, how can we get these numbers, everything to the bank by 5:30? Because if we start processing everything after, you know, 5:15, it's like, there's no way we're going to get it down there. So that is one thing I have been talking about. I know what it's going to be like. It's going to be a little bit of a shock for them, but I would love to start at 7:00. And even, I don't know if we can go all the way, even 4:30. 7:00 to 4:30 would be good, so then we can get those banks, or those checks and everything scanned and everything balanced out so we can get it to the bank. I would love that idea.
Mr. Chair. Is Saturday an option?
Well, yeah, it can be. I mean, we're, again, it's going to be tough on some of them, but I think it can be done. I've had, I've had a few people say, yeah, I'd come in on Saturday. I don't think I'd get a full staff, but I guess if I said, you're coming in, they'd come in, you know? Or have half of a staff on a Saturday morning, you know, for.
One more comment that we talked about yesterday was, a couple of years ago, we put up screen, a TV screen in the hallway down there. And Chris just said, maybe we could move some of the stuff on that screen and have it a list of what you need to bring with you to get a new title because inevitably, people show up with the wrong information. And so maybe we can use our screens more effectively to actually help expedite that line and get people out of line that don't belong there.
Well, one thing I have noticed that I have to change is when somebody does forget something, they'll say, oh, it's in my car. And then they'll put their little nameplate out to shut the window down until that person runs out, gets their stuff, and comes in. It's like, that can't happen. You know, it's like, you're either going to have to come back. I mean, I don't know if you run a rental car, but somebody else is going to come and take, you know, put that, that transaction on defer. You bring somebody else in, that guy can wait until he gets back. I mean, you know, and, because we cannot hold a lineup like that. Because some of these title transfers can take, take a while. And so, I mean, normally, I'd say about 20 minutes, but some of them have actually taken longer.
I guess my question or concern, you know, I've asked it before, and the response I got was, well, we've been doing it this way for 25, 50, or 100 years. You know, it's the way we do business. And I'd look to you to say, we need to change the way we do business.
It's time for a change.
Yep.
It's time for change.
And what I'm looking for is, you know, I can go to the doctor, set up an appointment, and the doctor shows up on my screen, and I talk to my doctor about whatever my concerns are and do it electronically without having to go there. And what are you, what are your thoughts, or how are you going to leverage technology so that, you know, if somebody could chat with somebody? And I know it's about staff, and I'm willing, if you're willing to show me that you can make changes and use technology and by adding the right people to make it more efficient, I'm all for it.
I like that idea of the face-to-face. I don't know, that'd be something for Zoom. You know, a lot of our phone calls that are coming in right now are from the out-of-staters, the title people, because it's like, what do I need? What do I need? And I've told the staff, I said, you really need to refer them to the website because you're holding up the telephone, you know, the telephone, and they'll call multiple times. And so it's like, you're, you know, but something like that, like a Zoom, or that's why I think it'd be nice on that TV out there, this is what you need for your out-of-state titles. These are the documents that you will need, you know? Because, again, somebody's always forgetting something. Oh, I didn't know I needed that. And it's like, it is on the website. So we need to kind of expand that electronic part of it and see what we can, what we can reach. But, you know, even having that TV downstairs, if we had that thing, if we had that TV going with information, I do think it would, like, people would look up there and like, oh, I don't have this. I got to go get something else and come back. So, but, yeah, there's got to be ways to use the internet or, you know, do it that way, yeah.
Mr. Chairman. So I really think that we should ask you to work with your fellow Treasurers on possible legislation that could change the process to be more favorable. I know that for people approaching 70 years old, that they're not always good at using the computers and stuff. Gerald, I'm pointing at you.
Senator Barth, that's a lot of the problem. A lot of our elderly, elderly people, my age even. It's like, I don't want to use that computer. It just, it.
Like weeks older than me, so I can say this. But I do appreciate how happy you are to be up here because it's easy to be crabby about this kind of problem. And you're not being crabby. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. You know, getting back to my other Treasurers, I have had an invite from the Pennington County Treasurer to come out there and spend a week with her, watching how their office runs. And so we're going to set up a time where I can go that and just see how she does it because I know she told me the amount of out-of-state titles they're getting is a lot higher than what we're getting here. I don't know, I think just because of that part of the state. She go, they, it's, she goes, we can't keep up. So I'd really like to go out there and see how they're doing it.
I suspect, I suspect that the legislature will say, that's just a Minnehaha problem, and will sit on their hands longer. And only a couple of counties will be in your situation.
Yeah.
I know that Robert Wilson, who used to work in this office, now has Carol Muller's job in Fargo, and the Treasurer there has herself and three, two employees because the state does all the registration.
Yeah.
And think of that difference.
Yep. And I know some of the Treasurer's Office do driver's licensing, and it's like, please don't do that. But, yeah, just the different jobs that each one has.
If I may, I'm sure this commission would go with you to the legislature to lobby for any practical changes that can be made to this to keep it secure and at the same time expedite the processes.
Yeah, and I've already talked to a couple legislators, and I've got a sister who is a legislator who's giving me instructions on how to move forward on it. So I'm kind of on that boat already, so.
However, we can help you. Thank you, Chris.
You bet.
Don't be a stranger.
Okay, I won't.
All righty, moving on to State's Attorney Dan Hager, Daniel Hager. Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning. Appreciate an opportunity to be here and speak with all of you. Let me just start by saying I'm very glad to be in this role. You know, it's been 141 days. I've enjoyed most of them, but happy to be here. Let me give you an overview of the State's Attorney's Office. There'll be some numbers in there. Certainly want to have a discussion with each of you and answer your questions as well. Our mission statement is we are committed to public safety as well as community service and equal justice under the law. You know, those are things that, as I came into this role, I met with each of the individuals in my office. And we talked about, well, what's our vision? You know, do we have a collective vision? What are we good at? You know, what are things we can do better? There were consistent themes throughout all of those meetings. They talked about, you know, we really fight for justice. You know, we're representing those victims. And I think that's reflected in this mission statement. And I can tell you that everyone in that office takes that very seriously. And so that's encouraging, right? That's a great thing for this county. I think that everyone, from the legal assistants to the digital discovery techs, they're all working towards these goals, and they're admirable. So I really appreciate those employees. As I ran for this office, I've talked with a lot of people in the community. And a lot of times, they'd say, well, what does the State's Attorney do? If you look at the, there really are two roles. And the first one, provide prosecution for adult and juvenile offenses. You know, I think when you think about the television version of a State's Attorney or District Attorney, you know, they're in court, you know, they're trying to convict people who have been charged with crimes. There's also that second role, the civil side of it. And certainly Eric Bog has been an asset to me as the entire division has. But there's giving the department heads good legal advice, you know, trying to address those problems and help avoid risk. We have the Abuse and Neglect Division that also handles kind of that civil side, making sure that those children are protected from environments that could be causing trauma. So those are really the two roles. Certainly, having a staff of 63 hard-working people helps me to accomplish those roles. Here's a breakdown of it. I cannot tell you how proud I am of the lawyers, the paralegals, the investigators, the victim-witness assistants, discovery technicians, diversion coordinators, legal office assistants, our office manager. Like, when we are fully staffed, that's what it looks like. We're not fully staffed right now, but we will be. Again, they are hardworking. I'm continually impressed just at the amount of grit that they bring to the office every day. They tackle the challenges right away, early in the morning, even before the building's not open, there and here, making sure that we're going to be able to be in court protecting this community. We are seeing growth in the county. Certainly, that's a good thing. It's a positive thing. With that growth comes challenges for the State's Attorney's Office. There's a natural crime that kind of comes with county growth. So as we see that continue to grow, we anticipate that there will be, unfortunately, more crime. But that's all right. We'll, we'll address it. Kind of zooming in and looking at those individual divisions inside of the office, the Civil Division, we have four attorneys. One is dedicated to the Highway Department. As the other department heads have come up and talked to you about what their departments are experiencing and where that growth is going, with that, we'll always need to be partnering with it quality legal advice. So we have, you know, Drew DeGroot, Maggie, Eric, they are providing that quality legal advice. And so I'm glad that they can do that. But just keep in mind, as the county grows, as those departments come and say, hey, we're experiencing this growth, so does that need for legal advice. What we are seeing is very time-consuming growth as well, the habeas cases. So when you have a defense attorney who represents a defendant, if there's a conviction, they're sentenced to lengthy amount of time in incarceration. They may allege that their attorney was ineffective. The state will essentially handle that case and try and say, okay, no, the defense attorney was effective, and this is why the conviction should stand. Those are time-consuming. As we see more serious crime happening and those convictions, those habeases grow. That's an area that the Civil Division is kind of bearing a lot of weight. That's growing. We're seeing more expungement requests. I think that that comes with a vibrant job market. As you are trying to be competitive, as you look for employment or better employment, not having. not having arrests on your record can certainly help you stand apart from other people. So those expungement requests are up. State law changes, I don't need to tell this commission that sometimes whether through legislature or vote of the people, there's changes to state law. The State's Attorney's Office wants to provide good legal advice and help certainly this commission through those challenges as well. Growing Sheriff Department needs. The sheriff has asked for a dedicated civil attorney to help him as, you know, the jail grows, other law enforcement issues. We've assigned an attorney to that. I know that part of the request at budget time will be to replace that lawyer or help fill the vacancy created by that. But glad to do that and certainly want to give the other department heads the type of legal advice and the mode that they're looking for. This juvenile division, two hardworking lawyers, legal office assistant and investigator, addressing delinquent children, children in need of supervision, that could be someone who's not going to school or a runaway. Hard work, we are seeing again a trend towards more serious offenses. We're seeing children who are involved in things that adults shouldn't be, but certainly it's not, it's not the same type of behavior that you would want from kids, right? It's, it's not horsing around, unfortunately, we're seeing attempted homicides. So again, this is an area where having a good team that's handling those is important. We are seeing some success with the juvenile diversion coordinator. Elizabeth is doing a great job there. We had two hundred and twenty diversion cases last year, one hundred and eighty-nine were successful. Now, that doesn't mean that out of that entire difference that those were necessarily unsuccessful, some would move out of the county, fortunately, some would pass away, so it's not that they're necessarily failing diversion, but certainly one hundred and eighty-nine successful is a feather in their cap. We average about one hundred and twenty days on diversion, so trying to get them connected with resources in the community. It's a community-based rehabilitation for these individuals. When you're talking about kids, we want to make sure that we're setting them up to be productive members of our society and just getting them hopefully out of the system permanently. We did refer forty-one to teen court. That's, I guess, kind of an alternative court for juveniles. It's a, it's a fun thing, I'd encourage anyone to look into it and watch it if you can. The Abuse and Neglect Division, again, two attorneys there, two legal office assistants and a paralegal. This division is phenomenal. They do great work, they are protecting children from abuse and neglect, trying to get those children into a place of stability, get them away from that trauma, they're working to rehabilitate the family. In 2020, they spent thirty-seven days in trial. So when you're looking at a work week, that's almost seven and a half weeks of trial work. That number's increasing this year. I think they're gonna be at about twenty-nine at the end of this week, so that's only, it's getting worse, quite frankly. If you look at the open cases in 2019, there were two hundred and forty-two total cases. Now, you can look at one hundred and ninety-nine in 2020 and say, okay, we made some progress, right? That's good, that's less cases. But if you look at the, the results, one hundred and twenty-five of those two hundred and forty-two in 2019 were filed. So I, I guess to briefly explain filed means they were more serious, you know, so we took them into court, we had a petition, we're more likely to end up in a trial, so where we're maybe trying to terminate parental rights. That number increased in 2020 from 2019, so although the case number went down, there was more serious allegations and that's, that's a disappointing trend, but I think that you'll see that, I know you'll see it because I'm about to show you on some other slides. But switching over to the criminal division of the State's Attorney's Office, we have ten lawyers in the misdemeanor division, fourteen in the felony, three paralegals, eight legal office assistants, two investigators and three digital discovery technicians support that side. There is some good news on the misdemeanor side. Misdemeanor crime in general was down in 2020. So that's a good thing. It was down approximately eight hundred cases. I think we have a slide, I can show you some of those numbers. And that's a good thing. I think we saw less driving offenses, you know, less possession of marijuana, ingesting paraphernalia, the no insurance, driving while suspended revoked, petty theft. I think that this is, this is not a surprising trend. I think that in 2020, people weren't out as much as they were in previous years, probably not as much as they're going to be this year. Here's the flip side of that. The next slide shows that misdemeanors with victims did increase, so the simple assaults, obstructing, resisting, violating your protection order. So the, the types of crime that I'd rather see go down, the ones with the victims unfortunately went up. On the felony side, we did see an increase in crime. They were up approximately two hundred cases, you know, so five percent. We did again see a decrease in driving under the influence of forgery, you know, so going to stores, forging checks, those were down. Again, that's good news, but the next slide really is, this is the terrible side of crime last year. The felonies with victims were through the roof, you know, simple assault in law enforcement, felony, simple assault, which means you have two priors that allows the state to enhance it up to a felony level. Aggravated assault, robbery, burglary, child abuse, homicide, everything was up and that's not a good thing. The next slide, this is a number that I want you to really remember. When I come in front of you and say, here's this percentage up, here's this percentage up, there can always be that inclination to say, well, you can make numbers say whatever you want them to say, right? You can twist them. This number is a conservative estimate. I'm not trying to inflate it and I can explain why I say conservative, but when you look at all of those victim crimes that I highlighted, just the ones that I highlighted, there are other ones that necessarily did not include in this, but that's the number of victims that there would have been more in 2020 than 2019. You know, so when I come in front of you and I say, well, child abuse was up seventy-five percent, forget the percentage, we had thirty-eight more children under the age of seven who are subject to child abuse in a criminal case. I say that this number is conservative because this is looking at it from the defendant's side. So if you have a defendant who's charged with abusing four children, I'm reflecting that as one defendant up there. So seven hundred and fourteen people in Minnehaha County were subject to a criminal assault, a homicide, a child abuse. This is a concerning number. This is the number, and these are the cases that are taking resources away from Minnehaha County, away from the State's Attorney's Office. The drain of victim-witness assistant time, you know, legal office assistants preparing, you know, notices for a court, preparing these documents, the digital discovery technicians trying to get the evidence of this. This is the number that is the, is the red flag. The toll that it's taking on those individuals who are suffering these crimes, the toll that it's taking on the people working in my office, these are hard cases. And so when I come in front of you and say misdemeanors were down eight percent, but felonies were up four percent, this is really the number that matters. What is the crime doing to our community? And this is not a good trend. So I, I guess we can talk about some good news. We have some specialty courts in the Second Circuit, Drug Court, DUI Court, Veterans Court, Mental Health. If you look at the 2020 graduates, you know, twenty-six in Drug Court, fourteen in DUI Court, one in Veterans Court, that's a positive thing. Those are people who are taking opportunities that they've been given, just, you know, kind of seizing that bull by the horns, building sobriety, staying out of incarceration. So it's not all bad news. And so I don't mean to stand up here and act like everyone's hair is on fire, but there are, there are some good things that are happening in Minnehaha County. The next slide kind of shows where we're at with files and kind of the trend. The far right, or far left bar, the open files, it's kind of hard to see the color, but those are the amount of files that the State's Attorney's Office is opening in a year. That orange bar is how many we're closing. So you can look at it, we never really quite get to the point where we can close as many files as we're opening in a year. That's, that's not a great thing. I would love to, you know, in a couple of years, stand up here and show you where we are closing more files than we're opening. I'm not sure if we'll get there, but we're certainly trying to get there. Twenty fifteen, that was not a year where everyone just worked harder. What happened is we shifted from an older case management system to a different one and so there was cleanup from cases from the seventies, eighties that ended up being closed. So that, that was not an anomaly of work. I think as, as we look at these charts, what we can see is that there's always work right now that's carrying forward. So we're not really getting, we're not getting ahead of where the crime trends are going. Next slide. With, with the growth, and I would say, I would say that this is the future, but I think you're gonna see that we're also there, digital media downloads. So we have three digital discovery technicians, we have some investigators that do some of this as well. This is not account for pictures that victim-witness assistants are obtaining as well, but these are just the amount of files that our digital media team is pulling because it's evidence in these caseloads. Trying to figure out how to present information in a meaningful way to this board. Like, do I use a bar graph? Do I use these pie charts? I put this up here and had talked with Mr. Boge about it, he's like, well, it looks like Pac-Man, right? Like, well, I don't know if that's overly effective, but I think what it does is it, it gives us a kind of a built-in analogy. We're seeing the, the digital media start to eat away at our resources and our time. And this is not something that's, that's going away. The next slide shows, you know, 2018, we downloaded approximately a hundred thousand digital media photos. 2019, it was three hundred and eighty thousand. 2020, it was two point six million. And so far this year, we're at three point seven million. So I would say that this is the future, but in all reality, it's the present because we are just in this constant battle of trying to get the amount of digital evidence that's being created through a telephone, a computer, ring doorbells, street cameras from the city, and we spend hours upon hours upon hours a day just trying to get it so that we can then review it as attorneys and figure out, okay, what, what is actually going to be useful evidence in this case and what isn't, but we have to go through all of it. So this is, this is the present. The next two slides kind of show where the State's Attorney's Office is now. We, we are still tied to paper files. We haven't broke free from that. Ultimately, there won't be a State's Attorney's Office who can come in and say, I'm a hundred percent paper-free. But I think that we can break away from some of it. You know, I, I don't use these pictures to say, this is all of our files, this is just what's in our office. We have a vault where we have closed files, open files, and then this is over at the jail. This is, this is where it's going to be a little unusual. Not often will you have a State's Attorney come in front of you and say, please help me empty these jails. But I, I'm doing that here because we have cell blocks in the old jail where we are keeping our, our paper files that we're generating. They are not super well organized, they're there, it's a reality. And I, I look at this, there can be some dismay, but I also see a, a big opportunity to improve the State's Attorney's Office. So we're talking about those files, we're, you know, opening twelve thousand files a year. I'm looking to try and end that trend, you know, stop creating as much paper and stop filling jails with old paper files. The next slide is the last one, steps forward. Here are the encouraging things that I want to talk about, the Adult Diversion Program. We have an open position now, we're gonna hire that. We're gonna look for opportunities and creative ways to take people who are becoming involved with the criminal justice system, try and get them reconnected with the community, make them productive. I think that'll be a good thing for Minnehaha County. I look forward to that area growing in the State's Attorney's Office. Continuing to improve the culture. Again, we have a lot of hardworking people in there. I want them to enjoy coming to work and just know that they're valued and so look forward to continuing that. Movement towards a digital office, again, I don't want to keep looking for empty jail blocks to fill with old files. I don't want to keep looking for cabinets to put in corners of the State's Attorney's Office. I think we can get there as well. And then continue to provide quality, justice-focused prosecution. Any questions, comments?
Commissioner Hager.
A couple of things. You talked a little bit about the Juvenile Diversion Coordinator and you had one hundred and eighty-nine successful youth go through that program. And just to point out or maybe ask the question, the state is still reimbursing us for every effective diversion that we do with juveniles. And I think that pretty much, I'm not positive, I think that's pretty much close to paying for that position in your office and as we see it continue to be used more and more effective, that position will be paid, it is or will be paid for. I think it's, I think it is paid for.
Yeah, we're really close, if not there. Certainly we've seen Pennington County thrive with that.
Right.
And it is a percentage-based, but yes, I agree. It's, it's something that's, it, it's good for the kids, right? Giving them diversion opportunities, but it also provides some revenue stream for our office.
Right. Another comment. And then on the adult diversion side, one of the things that, and I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, was that the Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Involved People, it's just a new program that we're kicking off and hopefully we'll have data in the future. The first classes going, set to graduate in July. From what we're hearing, it's been very, very successful and that's really what we want to do is get these people out of the criminal justice system and encourage them to be effective adults in our society again. And so there's a lot of moving parts going on right now with adult diversion and keeping them responsible for the crime that they have committed, but trying to move them to the next step in their life, which is a more positive, hopefully a more positive avenue.
Absolutely.
Thank you for what you do.
Commissioner Bender.
For the viewing public, I just would like to clarify that the paper files are in the old, old, old jail. We didn't build a new jail to put in the paper files in, so, thank you.
Good clarification.
And we have room there. All righty. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Great presentation, thank you.
All right. Authorize the chair to sign a landlord letter of consent to allow the city of Sioux Falls to apply for federal funding. Is Alicia here? No, there she is.
Hi.
Where'd you go?
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for hearing this item today. As I briefed you at the Building Committee meeting, Falls Community Health is eligible to receive up to one point one million dollars in capital funding over the next two years. As we look at our current and future space needs, we would like to leverage this funding to possibly find some areas within the existing Health and Human Services building that we could expand, but we also suspect that much of these dollars would be used within our existing footprint as renovation dollars. We do intend to work closely, closely with Director Benz on identifying areas of the building that would be appropriate for renovation, as well as adhering to any existing architectural and design standards of the building. As part of next steps with these federal funding opportunities for health centers, we do have to submit a budget. And part of the budget requirements is submitting what's called a landlord letter of consent. And while this document does attest to county support, it does not commit the county or the city to a final project at this time. The timeline for submitting the budget documents is short, especially considering that we are in a transition of health department leadership. So we understand that we have, you know, asked for a short turnaround time on this, but we don't want to, over the course of two years, leave these, this opportunity on the table and, you know, would ask for your support on this document. State's Attorney Boge did review the document and offered some edits, including that the city will work in collaboration with the county on any proposed renovation plans and that the county will review and approve those plans prior to us taking action. And we are in full support of those changes that were recommended to the document. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And just a quick comment, if I could, I'm also very happy that our chief legal, Eric Boge, worked on this. He, I'm very comfortable with the way this letter is worded, it shows our support and at the same time gives us full authority to approve or disapprove of any changes that would be made. So I'm very supportive of the way this- So I'm very supportive of the way this is written.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this letter and make a comment that, why don't you bring over the new health director sometime?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the invitation.
And a second. Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Alicia. See you tomorrow. All right. Authorize the chair to sign the construction manager at risk, CMAR contract with Henry Carlson for the extension and admin remodel.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. We have more building projects going on than what we typically, than we typically do. Three weeks ago, you signed the CMAR contract. CMAR standing for construction manager at risk. You signed that contract for the highway facility. This one is for the remodeling that will occur within the extension building, which is where equalization will move to. And then for, after that will happen, the remodeling in the administrative building. The growth of the state's attorney's office has really pushed them. And for those who've had the opportunity to see their offices, they, you know that they need more room. And I'm glad that we're able to get them their own floor for work floor and security. It makes a lot of sense for them to have. And the commission offices, these rooms, will all move up to third floor. So before you today is a request to authorize the chairman to sign the construction manager at risk contract with Henry Carlson. You will see amendments coming through, possibly as early as next week, already starting with the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price. Typical process for us to do it this way.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I guess I do have one question related to this, and it's for Auditor Kite. But Ben, if you don't, yeah, I know. We did the $10 million bank bond last year. Is timing an issue for a bank bond for us to, you know, we're going to have to finance all these projects?
So the, you've authorized an additional 10 million that we could bond for, for the rest of the construction projects. Our bond council has advised us that we should try to issue any bonds within a year of your your
Approval?
Approval, right? He had suggested if we don't issue within that time period, he would provide some sort of language or a motion maybe to extend that to a period of time. I don't think there is a legal reason you can't issue it two years after. He just thought it was good practice to do it within a year.
I guess I was more thinking about timing with interest rates and that type of thing.
Yeah, okay. So since we're in the budget process, I did reach out to our bond issuance, our brokers, right? And got a survey of what the rates were. So a 20-year bond, if we issued right now, would be at about the same rate as we issued back in December, around 2%. So they seem to be, have remained steady.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Moving on then to what everybody wants to talk about. Morning, Eric. Consider a motion to create an IM-26 medical marijuana task force and to appoint a committee of two members of the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners. Talk to us, Eric.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Eric Bog, State's Attorney's Office. Pursuant to our conversation at the last meeting, there were several indications, well, I think actually from all of you, on the wisdom of finding some cohesiveness between whatever our response would be at a county level to the city's level from the city of Sioux Falls and also from Lincoln County, given the joint jurisdictional and planning issues overlapping those three governmental entities. Pursuant to that, I drafted or would propose or suggest to you folks to create a task force, appointing two of your members to have, like committees from the other two entities appointed as well to work towards that same goal. Again, whether they're exactly the same response or similar responses, I think, again, there is wisdom, and that wisdom has been echoed from staff from both Lincoln County and from the city of Sioux Falls. I have, I'm not at an ability or liberty to say that they will, in fact, appoint somebody to this task force, but staff certainly echoed their support for this. They felt that their two respected governmental bodies would agree to that. I think the only question may be some as to the date when this report would come back. To that extent, you are certainly free to set that date, whatever you feel is appropriate. The only thing I would comment on that would be the issue is that the state law, IM-26, sets a deadline when the state has to adopt their administrative rules. Nothing's saying that they can't adopt those rules earlier than that. I would maybe beat a comment to the punch a little bit by saying past history would show that the state does not react fast, and if they have a deadline, they'll usually get it done right at or near that deadline. But this might be a situation where we should be proactive and the earlier the date to have that report come back from this task force, the better. Having said that also, I would also say that at least one of the comments from the city of Sioux Falls staff was that, do we really want to wait even for our own task force to report back? Can't we be working already towards some goal of our own during that process? And I would say to that, absolutely. It's just, again, as we're working towards our own goal, we want to see what the other two entities are doing, and this task force provides a mechanism to allow that to happen. Those meetings I would propose, certainly not under statute, a public body required to meet in open session. I would advocate that you would do so anyway, just to allow for as much public input as possible, to get industry input, citizen input, and possibly other governmental entities, whether it be other municipalities, counties adjoining the two that we're referencing here as well as anybody else that might have something to say. So with that, stand by for questions.
So if I could tee it up here, are we, is there a, it says, consider a motion to create it. Do we have a formal motion that we can review? Or just, the motion would be that we create a task force and that I would appoint two members to this task force that would then meet with the city of Sioux Falls and with Lincoln County. I mean, understanding that there's probably going to be involvement from planning and zoning departments. I mean, what we're trying to accomplish here is to have that cohesive voice in, you know, we have joint jurisdictional areas, especially between Sioux Falls and Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, so that we're addressing all those zoning issues, setbacks from schools, maybe from houses. Can you cultivate marijuana in Sioux Falls, or can you just do that directly outside of town? I mean, those are the types of things that I'm imagining this task force will be addressing.
Well, to the extent of what the task force would encompass, I think the broader you allow that task force to operate, my experience is that life has a way of throwing curveballs at us that we don't expect. So the more unrestrained that task force is, the more nimble there are going to be to respond to issues that they don't anticipate. If you put them in a box, the one issue that will come up they can't address is the one you can almost guarantee will come up. So with that, I did type up something along the line of a motion, but again, given the nuance of where my ethical constraints are, I was a little reluctant to send that to you in a sense where I didn't want to step across the line saying, this is what you should do. It's maybe a suggestion. So if you would like, I can certainly bring it up and read it to you. But you've articulated almost verbatim what I would suggest.
Commissioner Hager.
Mr. Chairman, I would just remind you that we'll need to put a date in that, an end date. And I think, you know, we talked a little bit yesterday with Eric about precedence going forward, that in other committees, it's always the chairman who sets those committees. And so that's why we decided to stay with what we've done in the past with committees, that our chairman would appoint people to that committee and set an end date so that we know, so that we at least have some type of a deadline. And summer is never a fun time to do this.
I guess the important thing to emphasize is that this task force has no formal rule-making authority, what their purpose is to meet, and then bring back to their respective governing boards, whether it be city council, county commission, whatever, the recommendations for public comment and for decision on implementation, either in whole, in part, or not at all. You know, that's where the rubber will meet the road, I guess, is when that recommendation comes back. So it all, and it all comes back to, we're suspecting the state could say October 31st, but there's some wind in the air that it could happen a lot quicker from the people that I've talked to, that it could move a lot quicker than that. So hence the date to move this forward, have this task force meet quickly, decide what it is that we, as a governing body, should be addressing uniformly so that you don't have to hop back and forth across 57th Street to, or the county line to skirt one municipality's or authority's rules. So am I missing anything?
No. And Mr. Chairman, the clarification that you gave a second ago is perfect, and I appreciate that. I'm sorry, I didn't say it myself. This is a non-binding recommendation from a task force. It would not be binding on Lincoln County, Minnehaha County, or the city of Sioux Falls. It's just a recommendation to allow the opportunity for the discussion to happen and for an opportunity for the three jurisdictions to, given, again, those joint overlap of planning and zoning, to have something that's similar, should they all three want to do that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I like this idea, and I would make a motion to ask you to appoint two people to this. I don't know that we need to give a specific end date, but I would also, if this passes, I would ask Eric a question.
Okay. And I think the reason for the end date is to give this task force basically a window to get this done so that it can be brought because of what action might be done at the state level. So your commission of Eric, a question of Eric?
Well, I was making a motion. What end date would you like?
What you talked about yesterday.
We talked about July 31st.
That's my motion.
I'll second Jeff's motion.
So then I would say that last night, we had a businessperson proponent of medical marijuana address the planning commission. And he claimed that the planning commission in Lincoln County had passed his plan. Eric, do you know if that in fact has happened?
Make your motion formal. I'm going to agree.
So Eric, again, my question was, do you know if Lincoln County's planning commission passed a plan for medical marijuana, the planning commission with planning and zoning?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, my understanding is that Lincoln County's planning commission did in fact propose or support a, an ordinance or a resolution saying that, yes, they would adopt licensing or issue licenses, but that the license would not become effective until the state issued their license. So it's a little bit of, a lot, much ado about nothing because the license at the local level won't have any bearing until the state acts. So it's a little bit of a coin flip of what I think our recommendation or my recommendation had been earlier to, to say that you plan to issue those, but you're not going to issue those until such time as the state acts. So possibly a six and one, half dozen and another, but it's similar, so.
Great. Well, so we're looking for July 31st.
Formalize your motion.
Yep. I'd ask the motion to authorize the chair to appoint a committee of two members of the county board to the IM-26 task force to meet with a like committee on the part of Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls to develop a possible ordinance regarding licensing and regulation of medical marijuana under initiated measure 26, and then report its findings to the county board of commissioners no later than July 31st, 2021.
That's my second.
All right. Motion and a second. The only additional comments I have, I know the city council is meeting at 2:00 in a special meeting to talk specifically about IM-26. I plan on being there, so if anybody else wants to, I'm sure it'll be on TV or Zoomed or whatever, so if anybody else wants to pay attention to what's going on, it's there. So we have a motion and a second. Additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for your work on this, Eric.
Absolutely.
Touchy subject. All right. Liaison reports.
Number 10.
If you had to go back to number.
Ah, yeah. You missed one.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just dive in and help speed this along for you. First of all, it's my understanding with Carol's help that the applicant misspoke earlier that the previous license actually had been issued by the county. So it wasn't the city branding that had issued that license. So my concern on who's supposed to be issuing the special events has already been taken care of. As to the numerical limit and the days, you folks actually, last year in Resolution MC 20-77, had set both a 15 consecutive day limit and a 15 special event limit in that same ordinance, subsections eight and nine respectively. So as to the number question that had been asked for, it's both 15 days long and 15 individual licenses per applicant in any calendar year. And that's the limit.
We don't want to break our own laws. Okay.
I make a motion to approve that special events liquor license application for the barrel house at Houston Speedway events between June 2021 and September 2021, and there are 15 of those.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in, I don't think I need a roll call, do I? No, all those. Commissioner Bennigan.
I have a question, Mark, if you wouldn't mind. Do you have an, I guess, an hours of operation planned? Because I remember getting lots of phone calls when Houston was running about the noise ordinance, the, you know, how long they were in operation and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. And their, and their goal this year is to be over by 10:30, no later. And last week, it was done at 9:05. So, I mean, they're, the new owners are really, they're trying to make sure that they're speeding everything up and, you know, so, yeah, last week, it started at 7:00 and was done at 9:05, so.
I appreciate your input. It's good to be able to answer those questions when you get those calls.
Yeah.
I think the racers then moved to Highway 11, quarter mile east of my house.
Well, you're old, so you can't hear it anyway.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Liaison reports. Anybody? Commissioner Bennigan.
Went to the fair board meeting last week, and they did get their 2019 audit report. Obviously, that was the beginning of the COVID-related issues, and there were concerns about revenue and obviously cash flow-related concerns. But the management letter, it was clean other than those exceptions. And frankly, there's a draft copy of the 2020 audit already completed, and we're waiting for that to be finalized by the board.
Commissioner Barth.
Big excitement was our planning and zoning commission meeting last night, which went past 10:00. One item was, we approved a plan development, which of the Peterson Trailer Park on Highway 115 going north towards Del Rapids. They're taking out all of the mobile homes, and they're going to sell 34 lots for stick-built homes on septic tanks with rural water. Then we had the hog CAFO in Wellington Township, Section 19, which it's borders on McCook County, and it's one section north of Turner County. Anyway, we had a pretty good crowd. I've seen bigger crowds. But we had a diverse group of people that were opposed, and then a strong family unit that was in favor. We passed it with the insistence that they work with the planning and zoning on a landscaping design that would help with the neighbors. There was no screening planned. One of the issues brought up was the condition of the applicant's operation in McCook County. I think that our standards are a little higher. They had like an open wooden box where they were are a little higher. They had, like, an open wooden box where they were placing deceased animals. We will have a concrete pad with a fence around it, so the coyotes and others, it's probably open for buzzards and stuff. But in any case, there were a lot of reasonable concerns, but in the end, we passed it. And going past 10:00, our state's attorney was still present, looking crisp and everything. We, so changing the subject slightly also was at East Quarter Water Development District, and we approved some assistance to fund a, and I probably have the word wrong, but it's LIDAR, where they look at the altitude of the ground, and they can see if, if there should be water, but there is no water, or if there should be more water, and, or whatever. They'll be able to actually measure within inches every depression. You know, here in Minnehaha County, we've had numerous drainage things put in back in the 20s. I was at one up in Taopee Township, where when I went to its origination point, I could see, I was standing in a lake bed, and there was a grate like a storm drain that went into a concrete pipe, went a couple miles, and discharged into Colton Creek. And the flow out of that pipe was fishable, was as big as Colton Creek, just maybe a mile or so south of Colton. It, the pipe terminates a little bit to the west. Anyway, there are drains like that around the county. Ditch Road is part of that kind of a drain. And we don't do the, we don't drain lakes anymore. But it's, they will be able to survey and see what might have been drained. And I tell you, you know, there's a big industry now of wetland mitigation, where people, let's say the city of Sioux Falls hires someone to build a wetland somewhere else, so that they can fill in the, you know, the Oxbow or something. Apparently, those projects aren't always working out right, but that's the kind of thing that needs to be done.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Any new business?
Oh.
Yes, sir.
You know, sorry, but I've been here long enough to remember when we removed the statue in front of the courthouse and sent it back to the artists that created it. It's built out of epoxy, and the thing was cracking. And apparently, that's happening again. I don't know that the artists are still available, but the, it's just not standing up to the heat and the cold. And it was donated us by the Bar Association. And it's something we should look into. Maybe, maybe we need to move it into the museum archive building and put a statue of Athena modeled after Commissioner Heiberg at the, anyway, it's just an issue that we should address at some point.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. All business. Looks like we are going to be recessing for, let's just say, six minutes, come back at 11, and go into executive session, so.
Recession.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are at recess.
Thank you.